As agreed to a three month delay unless we come out.
Yeah, I just gave you guys because Mark's on right. Bridget goes in.
One thing strange about the whole thing is this parkland doesn't belong to anybody or anything.
It's not our problem, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, didn't hear it. I know James said he would be here.
Yeah.
That should be a form.
Well, and that's what it's.
Who takes over the second market?
You guys have to vote to decide. Just believe in one of us.
Yeah.
We've been talking about it now.
Hey, Bert here. Hi, how are you?
Good to see you. Good.
So glad you're here. No, you're here.
He's not.
What did he do? He voted you in for tonight.
When did this happen?
You never talked to him? Oh, I assumed he had it all worked out.
And it's happened over the week.
He's really gonna make you up dry.
I was just telling you'd show up, too. That was probably next to mine.
You're fine.
Okay.
You're staying.
Ooh, you might.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was telling them, there's a button here that says push. Okay. If you push that, it'll need your microphone. You have to keep your finger on it, though. Okay.
But how are you?
If you wanted to talk.
So you were.
It's hard for you.
Because I know you like that.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
That new button.
Yeah.
So, you had a good holiday?
I did.
I think you get the answer.
And I can't hear when you're at.
I don't have to say bye, so it's very.
Come on.
A little intense. It's not long.
Thank you for not making me ask.
Yeah. How about you?
Stay warm.
Yeah, that work. Oh, okay. Uh, we're not ready to start. He'll let you know. Or I keep him letting you know.
Twenty years.
One minute.
Yeah, we got a couple minutes.
Do you have anyone else coming?
No, Mark's on here. Just let you go.
No, thank you.
So I told everybody else, everybody's audio. When I first moved in, I run a live. If you need to speak to me, you can. So before I was.
Locking me and you could go back. You know.
Oh, yeah. Secret, secret, secret.
Right, but as. Nobody's know with.
He didn't look at it, too. Exactly.
Thanks.
Exactly.
This year.
All right, sorry.
Want me to take mine off?
Yeah, please.
You don't want the church whispered.
I got a tie down here.
I, I really.
I wouldn't know that. I'm not actually. Own year since to a place.
You can keep it on.
I'm good.
You kind of.
Relate that.
All right, so.
Sorry.
There was a time in my life.
Yeah, no.
You guys ready?
What's wrong?
In a church. Yes.
There isn't.
Nope.
Hi, that green light, that right?
Um, yeah, there's no red light anymore.
So are we live?
I assume.
The camera's on. It's TV.
Are we outside? Yes.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the January tenth, twenty eighteen zoning board of appeals meeting. Can we have a roll, please?
Ms. Shoup, Mr. Blaze.
There.
Mr. Hebert.
Here.
Mr. Maroon, Mr. Loizal.
Here.
And Mr. Crockett.
Here.
Like to start with the pledge of allegiance to everybody else.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a point of order that we have to get to before we start the meeting. Um, we have the notes from last week's meeting. Would like to, uh, last month's meeting, excuse me, uh, like to get a move.
Motion to approve ministers present.
Second.
All those in favor? Approves announced. We have two appeals tonight. Yes, everyone is a voting member tonight. We have five with total. And we have two, two appeals this evening. Appeal number twenty-six nineteen, a miscellaneous appeal, uh, requested by the state of manufactured homes on one twenty-six U.S. Route One. Assessors map R seventy-six, parcel seven. Excuse me. Uh, election of office, I'm sorry. Is somebody being?
Election of officers. They do it every single year, so.
If you want to get right to business and do the election of officers after, you can do that, or if you want to table it until the next.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we hold off to the end of the meeting and then we don't hold everybody up?
That's probably should make a motion to.
Okay.
amend the agenda and move forward.
Do I hear a motion?
Post the agenda, Ben Dern, go right into the appeals.
Second.
All those in favor? And. Thank you for keeping me in line. Uh, appeal twenty-six nineteen, if we can have a representative step up to the podium and if you can give us your name and, uh, give us a brief explanation of the appeal.
Mr. Chairman and members of the zoning board of appeals, my name is Alan Beagle. I'm an attorney and, uh, we have an office in Portland and in Standish. And I've been asked to, uh, please introduce this matter to, uh, to you this evening, um, on behalf of Hillcrest, uh, manufactured home community. The, um, for those of you, I thought I'd give a little bit of background just so you'll understand what the, uh, community is about. Uh, the community was founded in nineteen forty-four, uh, by Bob and Agnes DeFossis. And, um, Bob, uh, died and Agnes survived him. She died in, uh, September of two thousand and eight. And, uh, the, um, community is now owned and operated by, uh, Teresa DeFossis and the, um, in State Manufactured Homes, which is, uh, owned by the DeFossis family. And, um, the Teresa DeFossis is here tonight along with, uh, her grandson Jacob, uh, Smith. And, um, who, uh, is learning the ropes at the manufactured home center, works there full-time. And also here this evening is Andy Morrell from BH two M. And Andy's here to, uh, present or to, uh, answer any technical questions that you might have. Um, the, um, the Hillcrest community has therefore been part of the town Scarborough for more than seventy years. It is a fifty-five and over community, meaning at least one member of the home must be, uh, fifty-five years of age or over. And, um, it is a private community, meaning all roads, um, street lights, sewers, uh, are owned, uh, by the, uh, by the community. And, um, are, um, therefore, because it is privately on the roads and the, uh, the lights and all the maintenance thereof is not a burden, uh, financial burden on the town Scarborough. Um, and because, uh, the members, uh, are generally, uh, they have, one resident has to be at least fifty-five, most are older. Um, the, um, they don't, uh, present too much of a, uh, enforcement problem for the police department. And, um, few, if any of them have, uh, school-aged children, so again, there isn't, um, much of a financial, uh, or, uh, operational, uh, burden upon the town Scarborough. The existing community center, uh, we're here tonight, as I'm sure you're aware from the, uh, agenda and matters, for, uh, a request by the, um, Hillcrest, uh, community that the, uh, community center, uh, which it was built in nineteen ninety-one, uh, be expanded. Uh, the, when the community center was built in nineteen ninety-one, it, uh, uh, there were a hundred and sixty homes in the community. Uh, in two thousand and four, beginning really the building, in two thousand and five, um, the, uh, the Fossis family came in and got the permission to expand the number of homes in the community and got and receive the contract zone. Um, and the, um, permitted number of houses increased from one hundred and sixty to three hundred and thirty-five. And now, uh, there are, uh, three hundred and thirteen homes in the community. And, uh, they anticipate that within the next, uh, year or so, uh, the number will probably be up to three hundred and thirty-five. As a result of the number of, uh, homes from one sixty to three hundred and thirty-five, uh, the community center has, uh, uh, a lot more persons who, uh, need to fit in it when it's used. And, um, the, uh, for your information, the, uh, community center, uh, is used for things by the community for such things. One of the principal things is, uh, for exercise, uh, daily exercise by members of the community. It's a private community center, persons from outside, uh, the, uh, community are not, um, do not, are not permitted to use it unless they're visitors, perhaps, uh, members that are visitors to the, uh, community, uh, to residents of the community. The, it's used like for exercise, bingo, crafts, book club meetings, um, community meals. They have a community meal, uh, one time per month, uh, at the community center. And then, uh, a couple of times a year, there's a, uh, community-wide, uh, party. Uh, there was a Christmas party and then a summer party. These are the kind of things that, uh, the community center is used for. And as a result of, uh, right now, the community center is fifty-five, uh, it's permitted, I believe, to have, uh, to have one hundred persons in it. And, uh, the request will be to expand the use that usually, it, I mean, it gets crowded with eighty people in it, so usually not even one hundred, uh, participate. But, uh, the revised expansion would allow two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty people to be able to use the community center. Um, and, um, if there is in the plans and the application, uh, the, uh, floor plans and it can be put up on the wall if you have any specific questions about that. Um, the, um, I have reviewed, uh, and as has Andy Morrell and, uh, the DeFossis, Teresa DeFossis and Jake. Uh, the, um, I, I've seen staff comments that I think we received today and also a memo from Brian Longstaff of December twenty-seventh, I think, or what, that addressed the, uh, requirements. And, um, it's really section five, which goes to section three F to section four of the zoning ordinance that set forth the standards that must be met, uh, to, uh, permit this, is because it is now a non-conforming use in the, uh, in the zone that it's in. The, um, I can, uh, we can go through those, uh, in detail if you wish. Uh, and, um, there were a couple of them that I thought might be of, uh, particular interest, uh, just in, and I thought maybe I'd have, or ask Andy Morrell to come forward and address the, uh, like the wetland zoning issues or the sanitary. If there are any particular questions, uh, you can, um, you know, we can certainly address those and various standards, how, whatever much detail you wish to go into. So I'd like Andy to come forward and address the, uh, the wetlands.
Please do.
Uh, good evening, Andy Morrell from, uh, BH two M. As Alan said, there was, uh, some comments that were put out. I just wanted to kind of touch on the wetlands and, uh, I believe it was Jay Chase's comment on, on wetlands. There was a wetland delineation done by Norma Del Associates in, uh, two thousand and four when the original approval was, was granted, um, as part of the expansion of the park. Um, the applicants are, are more than willing to go out and have, have that redelineated typically. It's, it's been a handful of years since that delineation was done, so we'd be happy to go out and have that well-in delineation look at, looked at. Uh, Albert Frick Associates has been out to the site and kind of looked at it and we'd be happy to have them do that. Uh, as the zoning board knows, if a positive, um, motion were to be made this evening for this, we'd go back to the planning board for a site plan approval. So our intent would be to have that with well-in delineation as we move, move into that process.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, actually, I, uh, overlooked it and I'm sure you're probably aware of it. This is frankly, a little unusual procedure because the, uh, we were before the planning board, the staff Monday and the planning board for, uh, this type of appeal has to, uh, review it and, uh, and it did, and, uh, either give its approval or not approval. And, uh, planning board voted unanimously to approve this. As Andy said, uh, if you, uh, grant the, uh, appeal tonight, it then goes back to the planning board for site plan approval and really getting to the details and that type of thing. Um, one thing I wish to, uh, address, really the only other thing that, again, unless you have specific questions, is, uh, the, uh, the, uh, traffic, uh, issue, uh, at, uh, Hillcrest. The, um, community center, uh, most of the people now and anticipate in the future walk to the community center, um, despite the fact that, uh, we're fifty-five years of age or older. Um, the, it, the community center is not far from the locations and, uh, it, uh, the residents have always walked, um, practically all of them to the community center for the various activities. Uh, the streets are lighted, um, and they're quite wide. They're wide enough for two cars to pass along with pedestrians on the side. And, uh, I think this day and age, people like to walk if they can, and that's usually what is done. The, um, there is a, um, a mini bus that's owned by, uh, State Manufactured Homes that takes the persons, uh, who are either are unable to participate or are unable to walk or, uh, just ask to be, uh, given a ride. And, uh, there is approximately sixteen to twenty parking places around the community center now. Um, and it's not anticipated that it'll be expanded because there doesn't appear to be a need to do that. Um, the, uh, and there has never been an automobile, uh, resident, uh, injury as a result of automobile traffic. It's, it, there is no thoroughfare. The, uh, community is essentially closed. Uh, community, the only traffic within the community are basically residents or persons, uh, visiting a residence. So if, uh, he, if anyone has a question, we'd be glad that there are, uh, the way that, I'm sure Brian can explain or has referred to, there are, uh, certain standards or issues that arise and special exception, uh, ordinance that, uh, that are addressed and I think are adequately addressed and really, uh, we can address further if there's any question about any one of those.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Great. Uh, if I can speak to Mr. Longstaff, do you want to speak to this, uh, appeal? I know that, like to hear from the town if we could.
Sure. Um, the appellant has pretty much stated the case. It's basically an expansion in existing, uh, structure. The structure was permitted back in the early nineties, um, constructed at that time. Uh, when they came in and approached the town with, uh, the idea that they wanted to expand the structure, we looked into, you know, the, the zoning issues and all the other issues as we normally do and discovered that it's in the industrial zone and it's actually not a conforming use in the industrial zone. And we're all pretty perplexed as to how that occurred. And the, the interesting thing to me is that the contract zone specifically allows the community center. But the, the boundaries of the contract zone, the way it was approved and drawn, go right around that parcel and don't include it. So we, we don't know how that happened. There's no documentation in the file to explain how, how that happened. And so the easiest, I guess, the path of least resistance to get to, to, to a yes, uh, was this miscellaneous appeal for an expansion of a non-conforming use. Even though we believe that, ever since it was built, everybody believed it was conforming and thought it was, everything was cool. We just couldn't, we couldn't find how that all occurred. So, um, so this is the route that they're going to. I know it's not the route they wanted to go to. They were just looking for a building permit and a site plan amendment and, um, but this is, this is hopefully going to get them there. Uh, we certainly, um, I don't believe the town has any, um, any problems with the expansion that won't be addressed during the site plan amendment process. And if, if parking or wetlands or any of those issues that they normally look at, uh, need some tweaking or some addressing, I'm sure that will happen at that process. Your job tonight is simply to decide and determine if the expansion of this facility meets the criteria that are, are laid out in the ordinance. Um, and if, and if so, uh, you have a, a favorable advisory opinion from the planning board as, as Mr. Beal, uh, alluded to. Um, and I believe you all received a copy of the, uh, email that has that in it.
Yes.
Those, all of those prerequisite things have been met, and so now it's up to you to just review the criteria. And if it needs it, approve. If it doesn't, uh, you can deal with it at that time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So before we go through the questions, I'll open it up to the board, see if there are any, uh, questions or comments for the applicant. Looking at this point, so. Is the expansion? The existing building is about twenty-four hundred square feet?
Forty by thirty.
What is it?
About twelve hundred, twelve hundred square feet, I believe, would be.
Twelve hundred.
Thirty by forty.
And, and you're gonna expand it? An additional fifty-nine hundred square feet or two fifty-nine hundred square feet?
I think fifty-six hundred, but, yeah, uh, they're expanded and it, my understanding is, and Andy might be able to answer, but I think it's an additional fifty-six hundred. Yeah.
It's an additional fifty-six hundred. So it's going from twelve hundred.
To sixty-eight.
To sixty-eight hundred.
Correct. Yeah, there's a, there's.
I think this thing goes fifty by forty.
Oh, is it six, I think it's sixty by forty?
Yeah, I believe it.
So it'll be twenty-four hundred square feet then, tomorrow.
Yeah. So what you see on the, the drawing up here, on the straight ahead, the, the white area of the building here, the existing building. And everything that's shown in the hatch area here is the proposed expansion. Probably six hundred.
Yeah, it's probably six by forty.
Okay. So it's gonna be about eight thousand square feet?
Fifty-six and twenty-four.
Okay.
It's all what it's called on one floor.
Any other questions from the board? Go ahead. I'm a little bit confused as to how something like this could get biased. You know, I mean, someplace, it's gotta be said, you know, where does this lot up here? Who's been paying taxes on this lot?
All right, it's been taxed.
Do you get a separate bill? All right, I, I realize you've owned it, but do you get a separate bill for it?
No.
It's, it's still part of the property, right?
Yeah, it's just, uh, part of the property.
It's just zoned.
It's just zoned.
Part of the property.
The way the contract zone was drawn, it doesn't, it doesn't preempt them owning it. They still own it.
Yeah.
The contract zone that included all of the, uh, manufactured housing community was drawn, drawn around it.
And do we have a feel for when that was established?
Um.
Do we, do you have any idea?
The contract zone.
It's number seven in the back of the book.
It, it is, yeah. I don't, I don't have the year. Well, maybe I did in my.
Two thousand and seven?
Four.
Oh, two thousand and four, okay.
Yes, that's right. It was mentioned earlier, two thousand and four.
That was when the expansion was proposed.
That's when the contract zone was created.
At the same time the wetland delineation was performed? It must have been part of that?
I would expect so.
Okay. So what was it prior to that? Prior to two thousand and four, there wasn't a contract zone?
It was just industrial. It was just zoned industrial and then.
And yet it, and yet it was a housing development. Right, because it started in nineteen ninety-one, so.
It started prior to any zoning, okay? The, the mobile home community, manufactured home community park was started long before any zoning was in place. So it was an existing use and perhaps a non-conforming use, but it was allowed to continue because it pre-existed zoning.
Okay. And the community center went into ninety-one?
Right.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? If you would be so kind to address the questions, the legal questions that we have to meet under the special exceptions. And it, it might correct that there really aren't any questions under the miscellaneous appeal, but it kicks over to special exceptions. Is that true?
Yep, that's correct.
So if you can go down to each of the questions.
Do you want to look at standards?
Sir, if you could go through each question and then, uh, give your, uh, presentation on each, I would appreciate that.
All right. Uh, section three F of the zoning ordinance requires, uh, has two requirements, and then it kicks into the special exception.
Okay.
So the two general, or the two requirements in section three F are that, first, the impact and effects of the enlarged, of the expansion, which is the one that's applicable, um, uh, to another, to, on the existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impact and effects on the non-conforming use before the proposed enlargement. Uh, so in other words, the, that, that's the first one, that the impacts on the neighborhood will not be substantially different than the, um, or greater than the impact and effects on the non-conforming use before the proposed enlargement.
Can you explain the applicant's position on that, please?
The, this has always been, as, as I've already said, it's been a community center. The impact on the neighborhood would only benefit the neighborhood and there would not be any greater impact than, uh, than currently. The community center still is used, I mean, will not be used for any different activities.
Okay.
Uh, that's the first one.
Yes.
And the, uh, second part says that the expanded use, uh, to another non-conforming use, uh, in other words, the expansion will comply with the standards for special exceptions contained in section four one in the zoning ordinance. So if you go to section four one, uh, of the zoning ordinance, there are, um, conditions, uh, A to H.
Are those in your packet here?
E, E to I, under special exception.
You got in the packet here?
Excuse me?
Is that in the packet, your answers to the, what you're just about to read?
No, I don't think so. I don't think, I don't think they're not in the packet. You didn't address it, you didn't, you know, you know, in the.
Yeah, we'll let them state them on record.
Yeah.
Now, we'll catch up with them.
Um, the first, uh, uh, the use must meet the following criteria. A, the proposed use will not create unsanitary, unhealthful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions, the air or water, other aspects of its design or operation. Um. The bathrooms won't, well, there'll be bathrooms in it, you know, and there won't be any more sewage than the members create their own home. It's not gonna change the amount of sewage that's flowing anywhere, not in the, uh, community and to the sewer. Um, the, uh, you know, these standards aren't all entirely applicable to this particular, uh, expansion.
Uh, would it be possible to have the engineer speak to the design that's gonna be, uh, incorporated into the building, please?
So the, the existing community center has, um, uh, two bathrooms, and that's in a woman's bathroom currently. I believe the intent is the expansion will add an additional two bathrooms. Um, the existing facility is served by public sewer and water from, uh, the community. As Alan said, the, uh, the flows, the system are expected to be the same, that everyone using this facility will be from the community. So they're either using the bathroom at their house or at the community center. So the flows in the system of the infrastructure in the street aren't, have a change, and they're all adequate to handle this capacity. Uh, as we said earlier, moving forward with site plan approval, we'll certainly need a, a letter from both the sewage department in this town and Boilwater District to confirm that capacity is, is acceptable for this facility, but we don't see any problem with that.
Is there a kitchen area within the facility? Is there, uh, air emissions from that that we would have to be concerned with?
There is a kitchen. Um, it's more of a function kitchen. I don't believe there's intended to be fry litters or, uh, anything like that. It's more of a stove top, uh, you know, to warm things up.
Okay.
That type of thing. So I don't anticipate a grill with a hood where you'd have air emissions or anything like that.
Okay. Any questions from the board on that first question, Al? Thank you. Pete?
The, uh, second criteria is, uh, B, the proposed use will not create unsafe, hazardous, pedestrian traffic conditions when adding to the existing unforeseeable traffic. traffic conditions when adding to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity. I think I've spoken to that, that was, in a sense, addressed previously. If there are any questions about that, as I said, the, the uses will be essentially the same, of course, as it existed, there has, the roads are quite wide, and most people walk.
You're not adding parking around the facility?
There's, there, we're not adding any, is that a question? No, that's not anticipated. There are sixteen to twenty spaces approximately, at, at the moment.
Any questions from the board on question B? Okay, keep moving. Question C?
Criteria C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems that would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require a substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. Well, I don't think they're gonna have any rock concerts, so there won't be any police problem, and seriously, though, the, the uses exact will be, as I said, it's a community center for fifty-five and over community, and the, all the persons, it will not be public, as I've said, it will be for the community, which is the existing use at the moment also.
Any questions on public safety, question C? Question D?
Criteria D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation, erosion, or have an adverse effect on water supplies. Maybe Andy can speak to, of course, this would be part of the site plan application.
Absolutely, yep. So if you look at the site plan, it's kind of up on the board behind you, you can see the kind of dotted line goes around the facility, this is the edge of the wetlands as it was delineated previously, kind of comes around the outside of the building here. So the expansion of the building is kind of designed around the wetlands, so our, our intent is to construct the building to not impact the wetlands. We'll provide all proper erosion control and sediment control practices during construction, those will all be spelled out on our site plans as we move forward with the planning process, but we don't see any adverse impact to the downstream conditions or the budding wells.
Any questions from the board on question D?
I'll just add a quick comment.
Yes.
That this is my largest concern with the application, was the potential for any sort of contamination of nearby wetlands, and given the explanation here tonight, this Merle's professional opinion that there will be no impact of the wetland, and that alleviates my concern.
Okay, feel free to move on to question E.
Criteria E is, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development. As you can see from the materials, the, will be certainly compatible, in fact, it will enhance the, the neighborhood and the existing uses in the neighborhood, meaning for the community. Physical size does get larger, and you can see what the intent is, it's all significantly, it's all a single story, which is compatible and with what's there now, and compatible with the neighborhood. The neighborhood is, all the homes in the neighborhood are manufactured homes, either modular or manufactured homes. The intensity of use will not significantly change, it will be the same community, essentially is, is presently served.
Great. Any questions from the board? Question F?
F is, if located in a shoreline zone, it's not located in a shoreline zone.
Correct.
So that gets rid of F pretty straightforwardly. G is, the applicant has sufficient right, title, or interest in deciding the proposed use, to be able to carry out the proposed use. The, the property is owned by the deposit family, and state manufactured homes has a lease, renewing lease option to, the corp, the corporation is owned by the same family, and has a lease for the property.
Any questions from the board on right title? Question H?
Actually, it goes through I, definitely. H says, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to section five of this section. BH two M is going to be the technical advisor, and I believe quite qualified to advise in this respect, and are known by the town Scarborough to be such. The financial ability, certainly if the planning board requires any evidence of financial ability, we'll be able to provide it, the, over the past few years, the expansion that's occurred has been more than five million dollars for the expansion, so that's, certainly provide evidence if required.
Any questions from the board on H, financial ability? Seeing no question, final question, I.
I, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation. Well, the existing uses are the same, and the other use in the neighborhood are the residences and the, and the homes will be using this. The generation of noise and hours, the, all of the events or the activities will be scheduled by the community, and they will certainly be compatible and not interfere with the enjoyment of the peace and quiet of the neighborhood in the, at any appropriate hours.
And is there a plan around operations for the facility, hours-wise, you know, eight to eight, something like that?
Pretty much, whatever the residence, I, there's never any...
Parting on to one o'clock at noon? I had to ask, a tough question. All right, great. Any questions from the board on question I? Seeing none, I would like to reach out to the public, if anybody would like to speak on behalf or against, please step towards the podium, they can speak on the appeal. Seeing no interest, I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting, and go back to the board for discussion, questions, debate. I look at this one as very straightforward. The situation that is created and is now against the applicant, and they're fighting for the appeal, is not created by them, it's an error that we clearly made somewhere along the line, that we never picked up on, so we never knew about it. I'm looking at the size of the building they wanna put up, they wanna increase it by about, say, two hundred to three hundred percent, but if you look at the growth of the community, they more than, are gonna be more than doubling, so it kind of makes sense to incrementally increase it, so that you can cover what you have, and I don't know if they can expand in the future, but it gives them some flexibility to, for future growth as well, so rather than doing it multiple times, it gives them the chance to do it now upfront, get the capital in now, and stop. Again, I think they've answered all the questions in the right direction, I think they've got good answers, I think it covers their bases, and I think it covers our bases, but if we wanna talk more, we can certainly do that, or we can have a motion, but if we do, I do wanna go through the questions individually and vote on them, unless we feel that we can do it in one vote on all of them, and that I would like to discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve appeal number twenty-six nineteen as presented.
Second.
Now that's seconded, I would like to vote on the questions, just before we close it. Do we feel comfortable voting on all of the questions at once, for up and, up and down approval, versus going through each? I think we've done a, I think we've done a reasonable job in answering the questions as we went along, and you could see our approval, as it went along, is pretty straight, straightforward and clean cut, so I'm fine voting it straight up and down. So all those in favor of the questions in section, excuse me, miscellaneous appeal, question F, and the A through I questions in the standards for special exception, all those in favor that the applicant has met those in their presentation? unanimous? So now to vote on what you had proposed for approval? One more question before we move further, are there any letters that were sent in that we...
No.
Need to address? Okay, so no more feedback from the public?
Correct.
So we have a motion? And it's been seconded?
Yep.
All those in favor of approval of appeal number, excuse me, I gotta get it right, thank you, twenty-six nineteen as presented? unanimous? Good luck.
Very much.
Thank you.
Two-six-one, diner.
And it's still changing, we just put yes, that's correct.
Correct.
So the next appeal is appeal number twenty-six twenty, a limited reduction of yard size request by Scott and Tracy Giles. Thank you. Twelve Black Rock Road, Sessors Map eighty-nine, parcel two. Please approach the podium, tell us who you are, and give us an idea of what the appeal is about.
My name's Kevin Brown, Kevin Brown Architecture here, representing Scott and Tracy Giles on their lot reduction, their appeal. Brief sort of description of the property is twelve Black Rock Road, it's an existing home on a big sized lot with a lot of, you know, just different, it's a doom, shoreline zone, doom restrictions, flood plain restrictions. We've been, we've met with town a couple times, and we've met with the E P a couple times, just understanding the constraints on the property, and what's possible for renovation, expansion of, of the home, to make it a year-round residence for Scott and Tracy. In our findings, what we've found is, to do the type of expansions that we want, or just sort of renovation that we want, we would need to lift the house per E P regulations on, and put it on a peer foundation. So that is our plan, to start with that. The other part of the, the other part of the, our plan is to expand, really, the only, we can't expand the footprint at all, so we're stuck with the current footprint that we had, what that we currently have. Part of the house is a one-story house, is one story, the other part is a full two-story. So our plan, and I don't know if it's, it's up here, but the side that has the one story, we're saying to put a second story on top of that, and to make that, to add basically more storage and more living space, because currently the house is only a two-bedroom house, and the goal is to have a three-bedroom house, as well as adding storage. Currently, there's a, there's a basement in half of the house, the two-story part of the house, and we would be losing that when we're going up onto the peer foundation, so obviously the, the storage is, is much needed elsewhere, since we're losing the basement. So the addition, and I don't have to go pointer, but the addition, as you can see, would be on top of the, the two-story piece over in here, and standing up for it. The one challenge, as we looked at this, there's a fifty, there's a, there's a right-of-way that goes through the property, the, the property itself is a pretty large parcel, considering the location, but there's a ten-foot right-of-way that goes right through the property, and we have a fifty-foot set, a front setback on either side of that right-of-way that we can't do anything in, so that's why we're here asking for the, the ten-foot reduction in the, in the front setback, just to do the, the second floor expansion in this quarter. And really, the, the square footage for what we're adding on the second floor is really less than the amount that we had in the basement, so that's, you know, we're really not gaining any more square footage than we, than we had, it's just making it, you know, a little nicer. So that's, that's the, the main reason that we're here, is just to ask for the, the appeal to reduce the setback by ten feet, just to allow us to do the full expansion on top of that existing footprint of the, of the house, on that, on that side of the house. A couple notes that came up in the, in the staff notes, was about, you know, the, we, the one thing that we neglected to talk about in our, in our application was the, the front steps that were, you know, that we, we need to, right now, that, the house is that grade, so there's no steps getting into the house, so by lifting this house up, I think it's about four feet to the, you know, in terms of where we have to provide stairs to get up to the house, we would have a set of stairs off the front of the house, coming towards the, towards the right-of-way, and right now, we have them coming straight out from the house, and, and the goal with that, there's really two access points to the house, that front door and the, the rear door that has sort of a U-shaped, U-shaped, U-shaped set of steps. So the goal with the straightforward, straight shot steps is really to move big items in and out freely, so that's why we did, you know, I wanted to just address, that's why we, the stairs are coming straight out. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and we didn't show it on that plan, but there is an existing bulkhead to the left of where those new stairs are drawn, and you can kind of see it in that, in that, yeah, that, right there. So that comes out about six and a half feet currently, so these set of steps would only be coming out another three and a half feet further than, than they currently are in terms of approaching on that, that right-of-way. I think, overall, I think that kind of covers the points I wanted to sort of bring up about it, I'm free to answer any kind of questions that you have upon the, on the appeal.
Any questions from the board at this time, please?
Can you explain what the right-of-way is all about?
There's, that'd be five of the properties, down at the end of four, yeah, there are kind of a, it's, it's, Black Rock Road is Long Ferry Beach, and there's, there's, there's a point, so it's only one way in and one way out, so they have to cross over the property to get to access the sort of...
So it's a road?
It's a road, yeah.
And the shoes continues?
Yeah. Sometimes seasonal, some of it's seasonal, yeah.
Two of people a year around, like that end road, it'd only be those four hundred feet, so it's, it's not a thoroughfare.
So it's not a sanctioned road by the town, it's a right-of-way to those properties through yours?
Correct.
But who, who created the fifty-foot setback from the edge of the right-of-way? Where did that come from?
You want me to answer that, Mr. Che?
Yes.
The, the property is in the Rural Farm District, the R F District, the setback from the road would be your front yard setback, which is fifty feet in the R F zone. So even though their road is narrower than a normal road, it's still a right-of-way, and there still has to be a front yard setback. It's odd that it splits the property, but that's not the town's fault, Ed. We didn't do that.
Yeah.
It's just kind of odd.
It is, it's different.
We would institute something like that on a right-of-way.
It's basically a hundred, hundred and ten feet that they can't use for the property.
Right, right. Thank you.
So if I could take a moment, if I'm off, would you like to speak, speak to the appeal?
Sure. Again, the appellant has, has pretty much stated the case, and I think the drawings are, are really excellent in illustrating the development constraints, if you will, on this lot. I probably talked to ten or thirteen people about purchasing this lot, and my first comment was run as far and as fast as you can, because at every, every turn, there's a constraint in, the first constraint is shoreline zoning, it's all completely within the first seventy-five feet to the highest annual tide. The second constraint, if you're gonna do anything to the house, because of the shape the house is in and its value, you're going to, you're going to trigger substantial improvement under the floodplain development ordinance, which means you now have to elevate the structure to meet floodplain, and while you're doing that, as you mentioned, you're also in the frontal dune, so they're gonna make you put post-piers or filings in anyway, as will the flood hazard development, because most of it's in the velocity zone and not the, but it does have an A-zone behind it, the new flood maps have it substantially, it's actually currently in an A-zone, and the new flood maps put it in a velocity zone, so obviously, the smart choice for anyone trying to improve the structure is to, is to develop it in a way that meets the floodplain ordinance that we expect will be in place in two thousand nineteen, there's no sense throwing good money at the bad, so it, also because it's in the frontal dune, they can't move the footprint, as, as, as the appone's representative said. The road that, that Mr. Blaze mentioned creates another problem, because you have a fifty-foot front yard setback that has to be met, as weird as that may be, it's, it's there, and luckily, as they've, as they've demonstrated, it, it could... it, it could meet the limited reduction of yard size, ten-foot reduction or ten-foot relief on that fifty-foot setback, and still be able to get inside that window. So that was, you know, very, very fortunate, because they would not have had any other option but to come to the board with a standard hardship variance, which may have been much more difficult to meet the criteria for. So I think they've done an excellent job of minimizing, although they didn't have much choice, they, they've done a good job of making some improvements that make the home serviceable for them, at least in, in planning, as proposed. And they, they added some space, which they are allowed to do, they're still well, well under the thirty percent expansion within the shoreland zone. And again, the issue, we've always allowed, when someone has to elevate a structure, we recognize that it is not always possible, if not practical, to access that elevated structure and still meet setbacks with, with the stairs, nor is it practical to try to create something out of stone or some other landscape feature, it doesn't work. The trick to that, I guess, in, in where I would, where my comment, in my staff comments, was going is, is it the minimum amount necessary to service the structure? And that's, that's a debate, a debating point, I guess. And, and so I only pointed that out so that you were aware of it. They absolutely have to have stairs to get into the structure, discussion about where those stairs would be located and...
Elevator's not an option? Come on.
Perhaps a trampoline? I don't know.
See, there you go.
We do try to think outside the block. But that, that's basically it in a nutshell. It's a very difficult property to do anything with, but it's also a kind of a, kind of a historic property. I mean, that, that whole area has quite, got quite a history behind it, the Black, Black Rock area, as I'm, as I understand it, is, was one of the first navigable, identifiable points from the ocean, the Black Rock. Could actually be spotted by ships out at sea. So it's got, it's got quite, quite a history there. They also just recently put a lot of money back into the road to shore that up, because it was going into the, into the river. So, so I think that, you know, this is an excellent way to preserve the property, maintain its, I think its style is very fitting as proposed, I think it goes well with the, the area. It's obviously going to increase the size of the, of the house, maybe, I'm not sure how it compares to all of the other houses, I have been down to the end of the road, and it was a relatively small house at the end, I believe, but it's still, I, I think they've done an excellent job of, at least with their proposal, and, and now it's up to the board to determine if all of the criteria under the limited reduction of yard size have been met. I will say that they certainly have met the criteria for the age of the structure being in, in existence prior to July, July 3, 1991, and they have not started construction. So those two criteria, you don't even need to address, those are met, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Are you, the, the proposed lifting, you're going by the new guidelines when you're doing this?
Yeah.
Great. Yes. Yes.
And to one question that, or one point that Mr. Longstaff had brought up, the front stairs, they come directly out, perpendicular to the front of the home. Did you consider hitting at maybe a larger landing and turning, so you could still get larger components in the home? And you might save three or four feet going towards the road? Had you taken a look at that?
We did. I think the, architecturally, we were just trying, you know, trying to make it sort of present to the front door, just seeing the front door full, I guess, was sort of our argument. You know, they're not wider than they need to be.
Yeah.
Three and a half feet wide.
Certainly.
The landing is just enough to stand there and then to then walk in.
And it's not covered, it's an open?
There's a little two-foot roof, just to cover a little bit of the door.
Door.
That's about it.
Okay.
Yeah, just to shield any weather from, if it's a wood door, it's usually required anyways.
Sure.
So how much farther are they coming out than the bulkhead is now, would you say? Three and a half feet. That's just a matter of how many steps we need really to cut down that height.
Okay. I don't see any more questions or comments right now from the board. Why don't we go through the questions around the limited reduction of yard size?
Sure.
And if you could not just read them in, just explain your thought process behind them, that'd be great.
You want me to read the actual questions, or?
Uh, yeah, just let us know what that question's about, and then your explanation about it.
The general description, we don't, we don't need to go through that?
No, you did that already, thank you.
Okay, so starting at B, the list of exact, list of exact dimensional reduction requested. So we're requesting nine point nine four feet, and that's just, just under the ten-foot maximum that we're allowed.
Thank you.
You want to pause at each one, or?
No, people, you're good. And we will ask questions as we go, so.
Okay.
If, if the board has any questions, please put them out there.
Okay. The existing buildings and structures on the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size residential is requested were erected prior to July 3, 1991, or the lot is, or the lot is vacant, not conforming a lot of records. Existing lot and the home, the one-story piece of the house was built in 1952, the two-story piece was added in 1970.
Great, pretty clear that one's met, thank you.
Yeah. The requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district. Again, we're trying to sort of, it's a two-bedroom homes, we're trying to make it a three-bedroom home. We've looked at other properties down the road, I think it was number sixteen, Black Rock Road has four bedrooms, number eighteen has five bedrooms, so we're just trying to make it more in line with some of those, make it a year-round home.
And those are permanent homes as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Due to, due to the physical features of the lot, or location of the existing structures in the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion enlargement or new, new structure in accordance with the currently, currently applicable yard size requirements. And I think we've demonstrated, just sort of, the footprint can't move, that, you know, we're kind of stuck in where we are, so we're just trying to move up on top of where, where the existing footprint is. The impacts and effects of enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on existing uses in the neighborhood will not substantially, will not be substantially different from any, from greater than the impacts and effects of the building or structure which conforms to yard size setback. Again, this kind of goes back to the last one, where we're, you know, we're proposing the, the structure, but it's not going to change, I'm trying to remember which one we're proposing.
You're less than the thirty percent maximum?
Yeah, we're at twenty, twenty-eight percent.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board thus far?
No.
Okay.
And then the last one was about not, we haven't committed construction yet for the property.
And I think Mr. Longstaff addressed that one as well, so we're good. Okay, thank you for your questions. I'd like to open it up to anybody in the public that would like to speak to this particular Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting and go to the board for questions and discussion. Again, my opinion, I appear, it appears we're lucky again tonight, this is, to me, another pretty straightforward appeal. You are landlocked based on conditions that you didn't create, and the zoning has stayed, well, I think the zoning here has stayed pretty consistent, but the shoreline has moved, or the, the, the grading of the shoreline has moved. So you're doing the best that you can to protect your property, increase its value, and take it from a non-year-round resident to a year-round residential property. So I, what I see is something straightforward, and I don't see that they are taking it, or taking advantage of the town or any of us boards to try and build beyond what is allowed. We, do we get any input from?
We cannot.
Letters? So we haven't heard anybody from the public as well, so clearly, there's not too much resistance to it, so it sounds like you're doing the right things. Anything else from the board?
I'd have to agree with you, Mr. Chair. I think they've done a nice job at illustrating the renovations, that they're keeping within the ten feet they can request. It's nice seeing the diagrams and the illustrations here as sort of a, a model for applications in general, it's nice to see everything clearly laid out, and as you said, they're not, they're not overreaching, they're not trying to reach for the, the sky on this one.
Right.
So I appreciate that.
And I think, I think you could swing the stairs sideways, but it doesn't make for much of an entrance to the home.
Right.
So I think that would kind of work against the character that you've designed in to keep character in this case, and I think it would work against that, so I wouldn't recommend it on this case. Anybody else? Any, if there's no further discussion, a motion from the board, or?
I'll make a motion to approve appeal number, what is it, 26, uh, 2620?
Yes.
Second.
As presented.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Your name is? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Good luck.
Mr. Chair, can we use this as a model application for future? You guys had all the, all of the tough things to address.
Give him another five feet. We don't want to play favorites, but you win.
Just for that, you could have fifteen.
Thank you. Now, board members, we aren't off the hook yet. We had delayed the election of officers, so that is something we need to address before we close the meeting. So, Mr. Longstaff, what do we need to do? Buddy, pal, friend?
Well, every, every year, the first meeting in the year, the board is supposed to elect a, a chair and a secretary according to the minutes, not the minutes of the board bylaws. In my experience, we've never elected a secretary on the board, because the secretary's duty is to take the minutes.
Right.
So I think, I think maybe somewhat, informally, we changed that to a vice chair, so it's sort of a chair and a vice chair.
Yeah.
Had been sort of the way we've gone.
Okay.
In the past. So with Mr. Maroon not here, I did email him and ask him, you know, just, just so that you guys wouldn't get stuck if, if he was going to either accept or not accept a nomination, should that happen, and no, I was I. Advocating that it happened, it's up to the board members, the, the officers are elected by the, the board members, if you feel comfortable going forward, nominations can, can come through Rick and be, and be voted on, same way you would vote on any other motion before the board.
And what was his opinion if he were nominated?
I never heard back.
Okay.
He didn't show up for the meeting.
But you know the rule.
So based on that.
If you're not here, you're automatically in.
I'm going to make a motion to elect Mr. Maroon chair. If any would like a discussion on that, I mean, he's a.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Can we just? He's not here.
Okay, discuss, let's have a discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, my bad.
He's not here.
Take that back.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
My assumption is he needs to be here to accept, especially because Brian just said he did not respond. I was going to nominate you, Rick. I think you did a very good job tonight, I think you were very thorough, and it went very quickly. I nominate Rick Lloydon.
But if you do it based on her, couldn't they do it based on her?
I mean, it was a bit luck that we had two easy cases, so.
Any, any and all nominations can, can, you know, a nomination can come.
Certainly.
And can be seconded, and then discussion can happen, and then a vote can be taken. Or, you know, so, so I guess the thing is, if somebody's nominated, and the vote's taken, and it's not a majority voter, then you, you can move to the next nomination.
Does he have to be headed?
I don't, I don't, I mean, there's no guidance, I'm sorry, there's no guidance.
Can we delay this until the next meeting?
You, you absolutely could, and I said that at the beginning. You can table it for the next meeting if you would rather do that. But.
I'll force him here.
But I, I honestly don't know. I, I know, I don't want to, I don't want to talk out of turn. I, I'm just not sure if he wishes to continue to be chairman or not, should he be nominated. I, and it is, to Ms. Schupe's point, it's kind of unfair to nominate him and elect him chair if he, in fact, doesn't want to be chair. I'm sure he probably would.
I think it's totally fair, but I understand.
But how can I, how can any one of us know that?
Certainly.
I would, I would agree as well. I mean, as much as I am of hostile takeovers. I, it would be ni, it would be nice to have everyone here. However, with Ms. Schupe's potential nomination of you, I would second you to be the chair.
You both are sick people. Sorry.
And I think, I think, I think Chairman Maroon has done a great job, and, because he's been the chair since I've been here on the board. And from, there's not, nothing for me personally, but I would like to see just a fresh, a fresh look on things for my own personal experience, as, as like, as we move forward, as my time here increases on the board instantly.
I think your points are fair, and I think since Mark is absent, why don't, why don't we consider tabling? That way, he can be here to, hear discussion and be involved, and I think it would only be fair to.
I believe he missed the last vote when he was voted as well.
I think he ducks out on purpose.
Well, and, and Mr. Chair, in, in all fairness, if you wish to table, that's a vote that the board has to take.
Yes.
If the, if the board doesn't want to table, and they would rather vote to make you chair, then that's, that's the way it would go. Just putting it out, out there.
Yes.
So, I'll shut up.
So currently, what's on the floor right now?
We've had two nominations and one discussion to, to table.
So Cam, was yours a nomination? Yours was in a.
Hers was a nomination.
So I, I didn't have that.
Do you want to see if we want to table first?
Seconded that.
Yeah. Well, before we go too far, are you willing to even do it? You've got a lot on your plate as well.
I certainly do. Knowing my, what I have for travel with my company, it would be difficult for me to be here every month, and I, and if I had to guess, I'm going to be missing probably three or four of the meetings over the next, next year is my guess.
Now, I did, I did go to the town and asked to submit my application to become a voting member this year, but they said that you and Mark renewed, and so I think, for me personally, I'm disappointed that I was, they said, "Don't apply, because you're renewing." And so I, you know, I actually, I would love to be an active member in this, because I'm only an alternate, you know, I don't, I'm not going to have a stay next time.
Right.
Because I'm an alternate. And so I think it's just disappointing that, you know, if I want to chair, that's going to be here all the time, and members are going to be here.
Certainly.
I have a question. So, Mr. Longstaff, you have mentioned that there is a vice chair, basically the backup for when the chair is not here?
Yes.
Is that also a nomination and a vote as well?
I think when Mr. Loyzelle came back on the board, I believe that Mr. Maroon had made the request that he be taking the vice chair position, because I believe Mr. Stark was the vice chair prior to that.
Correct. I think they just put me in Jim's spot.
He kind of just slipped into that seat, and then back when, when Mark wasn't on the board a few years ago, you, Mr. Loyzelle, and Mr. Stark shared the chair position, and that's kind of when that really sort of started, and that was due to both of you having schedules that wouldn't allow you to be here a hundred percent of the time, and you knew that.
Correct.
And so you were able to, except for one occasion.
Yeah, one occasion where I got put into the room. Neither one of you were. I was actually a short opinion.
You did good. You did good. I remember that.
So what I'm, what I'm going to recommend is, we should vote both chair and vice chair in.
Yeah.
So that, I think it's only fair, it shouldn't be an appoint, and it should be a vote of the board. Me personally, I'd like to have Mark here, but, I mean, I, I mean, we are a board, so. What do you guys think? What, what's your opinion?
I think we should table.
Table?
It's my feeling.
Yes, but if you table it, to Ms. Schupe's point, and Mr. Maroon's here, does that mean she doesn't get a vote?
Correct.
That's true.
So that's.
I don't necessarily think that's correct. We could, we could allow the vote to occur by voting, vote in, right?
I don't know.
I'm, I'm, I think if we made a motion... I'm, I'm, I think if we made a motion and then voted it in, allowed you to vote, then you have as much say as anybody else.
It probably wouldn't be, if, I don't want to say it's not important a point, but it wouldn't be challenged anywhere-
Right.
...we did that.
Right.
I, I like the idea of a lot, you know, for, when you're electing-
The entire board votes, not just the voting members.
I like that idea a lot, and, and I personally don't like, I'll get up on my soapbox, I personally don't like the alternate positions not being able to vote at every meeting, and I don't like the idea that somebody can get stuck in an alternate position and never move up to a full voting position.
For nine years.
Yeah.
And that's where I'm at.
But we still want one alternate position open to them.
Yeah, we have an alternate position open. So, I, you know, but I don't know what, again, I don't like it, there's nothing I can do about it.
Right.
It's not my system, and it's not your system, it's the system that was set up.
Right.
So, the alternate position, I, I don't want to convey that the idea that the alternate position isn't important. I think the alternate positions are important because the discussion can still take place.
Yeah.
You can still ask questions, you can still bring up points. Just because you don't get a vote, you, you actually, the alternate can actually sway the rest of the board, or bring up things to light that they haven't thought of. So I think, I don't want to in any way diminish the importance of the alternate positions. I think they are important, and many times, full voting members aren't here.
Yeah.
That's when they're really important, because they fill that hole. So in no way do I ever want to downplay that, and I know, Ms. Schub and I had a long conversation, and, and I, I basically begged her to, to continue and stick with it because I value, I, I, I want, I, I, I'm mad that we don't have the other alternate position filled. We, and, and to that point, I would like everyone to kind of beat the bushes, and I know Karen has, beat the bushes, you know, at your workplace, and at kids' games, you know, talk to other adults, other residents of town, see, think, who, who might be willing to, to jump into this?
Don't act crazy about it.
Mark, Mark isn't going to want to do this forever.
Right.
I, I'm sure of it. He, he, he took a year off before, and I, you know, I think everybody will eventually, you know, and, and I like to see some younger blood, you know, I like to see somebody who doesn't have hair my color.
Hey. He's got hair and he's complaining.
When I first came on, your hair was darker.
Yeah, it was. That was my thought.
I do that to people. But I, you know, I would like to see fresh blood to, to Mr. Heber's point, and I think it's good to get fresh blood. Doesn't mean that past chairman or current chairman can't continue on the board-
Right.
-and still contribute, but it's kind of nice to have somebody else take that role, just so that there is some fresh, you know, a new cadence, a new-
Yeah.
-a new style. I think that's important. I think the board can get bogged down, kind of dragged down by this, and, and again, nothing against any chairman, everyone has their own style and their own, their own cadence, and I just think it's nice to change it up every once in a while. And I'll go back to the year that you and, and Mr. Stark shared that role, I think that was a good year. I think, I think we did an excellent job, I think the meetings clicked along at a nice pace, the questions were thorough, everything went well. I, I really applaud you both, I think both did, and as did Mr., Mr. LeRoy, did a great job.
You do, you deal with maximum amount of terms too, and that's why Mark had to take the year off because he was forced to.
Me too.
Yeah.
I was forced to take a year off.
I, I don't understand that, because I, there's nowhere in the bylaws where the term limit-
You can do three, three-year terms.
Yeah, so they go to three, three years, and then you have to step away.
It's not written, it's not written.
I don't know where they got it.
I think something pretty close to that, actually.
Oh, God.
Well, I think what's frustrating for me is I do have interest in being chair, but I will never be chair because I'm serving here for nine years as an alternate, and then I'll be out.
Well, not because you could run for a vacant-
Yeah, no, I just-
Then you go, you can move up to a position.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Well, and I think what I've now seen though is like, Rick's, the position that Rick got came open, but it wasn't advertised to us, so I missed that opportunity, and I just told not to apply again, and so.
I don't know why you couldn't resign as an alternate and run for an open full-voting position if one ever came up.
But I thought you automatically went from alternate to voting, either last-
Well, that was-
First hour, then moves into the voting.
That was the situation when you, when you came on board, but that, that's, it's up to the board and the, and the chair as to how he wants those positions to go.
Because I did move in that way, I was an alternate first, but I think I only have two years left, so.
But anyway, we're, we're getting a size of-
But if I can also add, now, now that I'm aware of the situation with Ms. Schub, there is some things that we can do as a board to give you more presence on the board, just because-
No, I really do feel like I do have a lot to offer. I think I've expressed before that I literally sit next to the chairman of the South Portland Voting Board of Appeals. And so, you know, I'm, I'm talking to people, and I understand, I think, a different aspect than probably what you guys are doing, where it's a legal thing for me. And, you know, I'm sort of new, but I feel like I can add some value to this. I feel like I'm consistent, I can be here, and I feel, I would like the opportunity, but, you know, I'm pretty eager, and if I'm going to be an alternate for nine years, and if you want to get young people involved, again, I think I said the same speech last year, it's, you're kind of losing people, it's hard to, I had an attorney who was somewhat interested, but when I said it was an alternate position, it was not interested in. And fortunately with them, it's the prestige of having a voting position.
Yeah.
And so.
It's ideal for someone who, who doesn't know what this is about but has an interest in serving and wants to kind of come and observe, it's a great opportunity as an alternate to come and observe and participate-
Right.
-and yet not have the pressure of having to vote on anything, not that there's tremendous pressure, but it's, it's a, you know, I think the whole alternate position is really creative for either outgoing members who, who wanted to come back on and just participate, or new members who want to get their feet wet and then move up into a, a chair. I think it's unfortunate that it has to take, if it's three consecutive three-year terms, it's unfortunate that it would have to take nine years, you know, if everyone wanted to. It's good that people want to continue, don't get me wrong, that's good too, that's a good thing.
But fresh blood is a good thing.
Fresh blood is a good thing, and young blood is a good thing, and.
So, so what I was going to say about Ms. Schub's situation is, it doesn't mean that you need to stay as alternate even though we have a full board. I mean, just because I'm here doesn't mean I need to be a voting member on a certain month. So I'm, I'm more than willing to step back and say I'm not going to be voting this week while someone-
No.
I don't know that you-
I don't think we can do that, I think it's one or the other.
I don't think you can do that.
I could sit here on you.
I, I mean, you could say you're recusing yourself.
Yeah.
I don't think we should actually recuse ourselves, I don't know.
But you'd have to have good reasons to do that.
Right.
I don't trust myself.
Otherwise you'd be shirking your duty.
No problem.
And you're not, you're not a shirker, are you?
Well, you know, I want to spend my time on myself, I think I'm just kind of representative of my generation, and I don't know if James feels that way, but you know, we kind of get involved and we want to feel like we're participating and part of it, you know, I, it's a very busy life, but I, I like this stuff.
Yeah.
And so I do want to be here and part of it. Um, you know, unfortunately, I did reach out to Mark, I had a lot of questions about the meeting we had last month, and he's not gotten back to me, so I am looking for, I think, a little more leadership on the board as well. Because I have a lot of questions that I'm not comfortable asking on camera, that are just general and stuff. I'd love some more guidance, things like that.
And back, and back to my point, and which was kind of hashed already, but for, again, my own learning, continued learning experience on this board, I like to see just something fresh. Again, no insult to anyone, but I want to see different styles, and I want to see fresh approaches, and I want to see some change. I mean, not, I mean, not like change, like boot everybody off, obviously, but-
You can boot me off, I'm not-